What, uh, evening.
I would like to call the May 28th, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call a roll?
Carrie?
Present.
Chilson?
Present.
Hutchings?
Here.
Nelson?
Uh, excused absence.
Parker?
Uh, excused absence.
Whackler?
Present.
Kincaid?
Uh, an excused absence.
You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? Mr. Carey, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Ms. Hutchings?
Ordinance 2025-015 and ordinance 2025-017 from the consent agenda.
Will the clerk please read the consent agenda as it is now?
May 14th, 2025, regular city council meeting minutes. Ordinance 2025-014, adopting into the biannual operating budget and establishing appropriations for fiscal years 2026 and 2027, sponsored by the City Manager Public Hearing on June 11th. Ordinance 2025-016, amending Saldana Municipal Code Title VI, Animals, and Section 1.08.080 Minor Offense Fine Schedule, sponsored by the City Manager Public Hearing on June 11th. Action Memorandum 2025-010, request for an excused absence from the May 28th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Nelson, that is your consent agenda.
Are there any public comments, uh, from, on any item just read by the clerk? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item just read by the clerk on the consent agenda? Seeing none, take a look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised there. Having no one wishing to speak, the approval of the agenda and consent agenda is back before the council. Any objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Seeing, hearing none, the consent agenda and the consent agenda are approved by unanimous consent. Next item on the agenda is, uh... Oh, is the, uh, proclamation I have for Alzheimer's Week Month?
And I know there's one people did, uh...
Okay, uh, this proclamation, whereas Alzheimer's disease, the most common form of dementia, is a progressive and degenerative brain disorder that causes memory loss and affects self-care decisions making, decision-making and behavior, whereas there are 8,400 Alaskans now living with Alzheimer's disease and 25,000 unpaid caregivers. And whereas currently, there are unpaid caregivers providing 39 million hours of support to their loved ones with Alzheimer's disease each year valued at 887 million annually. And whereas dementia is a leading cause of death in Alaska and the only leading cause of death in the country with no known treatments to prevent, cure, or even delay the onset or slow the progression of the disease. And whereas with early detection and diagnosis, individuals and families can gain access to medications and support services which promote quality of life, fully participate in planning for the future, and enroll in critical research trials. And whereas the city of Saldana recognizes the efforts of the Alzheimer's Association to promote awareness of Alzheimer's disease and other dementias and provide care and support to all those affected, thereby improving the quality of life for individuals living with dementia and their caregivers. And whereas annually on the summer solstice, the Alzheimer's Association hosts the longest day, an event dedicated to shining a light on the darkness of Alzheimer's and dementia, and which teams around the world come together to honor the strength and passion and endurance of people impacted by the disease. And whereas June is Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and whereas it is important to recognize the stories, strengths, and efforts of individuals, families, friends, and caregivers impacted by dementia, as well as the tireless work of the researchers who are seeking a cause and cure. Now therefore, I, Mayor Paul Whitney, do hereby proclaim June 2025 to be, in our city of Saldana, Alzheimer and Brain Awareness Month, and June 21st, 2025, as the longest day, dated this 20th day of May, 2025.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Now she's gonna make us stand here again.
So I would get to break two cameras.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, next item on the agenda is presentation with prior notice, and the first one is Alaska Christian College update by Dr. Keith Hamilton, the executive director.
Well, thank you, friends, good friends, uh, back again for my annual...
Welcome to Alaska Christian.
...of your, uh, your Christian college here in the Kenai Peninsula. And if you haven't been to our campus, I hope you'll come by, drive through, uh, someday. We're right off of Church Coffee Pot Road, also known as K Beach Road, Church Coffee Pot, Church Coffee Pot. And, uh, okay, so they somebody laughed louder when I did this, all right? So that's just the way it goes. When I start with a video first and update on the college, let's watch. Christian College, what began just five days after 9/11 has become an amazing ministry here on the Kenai Peninsula. Since our inception, we've had over 850 young people walk through our doors, about 90% of those Alaska Indigenous young people. Our campus started with just one building on 10 acres, and today we celebrate 27 different building projects on an entire 30-acre campus. And here's the best news of all, we're debt-free! ACC offers four different degree programs. Our first degree is in professional education, the second behavioral health, the third, of course, Christian ministry, and our final degree is in general education. About half of our students participate in the general education degree. It is a two-year educational opportunity for our students when they come to us from rural Alaska, to either go back to their homes and villages or to continue on to a four-year education. The buildings that we have built on campus have been built by volunteers over the years, many of them from the Lower 48 and from Alaska. Most summers, about 300 people come to our campus. We're grateful for each one, and if you do come up, I promise you, you only have to work during daylight hours. The biggest project on our campus has been this amazing athletics center that's been taking years to build, and soon day, we'll have students coming from all over Alaska to join us to play basketball and enjoy our workout center as well. This is an amazing project that we pray that God will use for his glory. And we're very excited about a new chapel to be built on the campus of Alaska Christian College. It's called the Gloria Chapel, and many people have given through their wills and trust to make sure that there's a dedicated worship space for our campus students. New Hope Counseling Center is a ministry also of Alaska Christian College that has been with us since 2003, and we celebrate that at 24 hours a day, our students have access to the mental health needs that they might have, but also about 75% of the people that come are a part of the Kenai Peninsula community. But you know, it's really about students. We talk a lot about our buildings, what God has done and the miracles over the years, but it's about lives being changed. All these students that have come to us from rural Alaska and other parts of the state in the Lower 48 have experienced the amazing new life that's found in Jesus Christ. Thank you for your support and for giving to life-changing education. Kwayana, take who? So for gives you a little bit idea, if you haven't been to campus, what it looks like, I have a slideshow, uh, I want to show you as well. It's, uh, been an amazing year as we now approach our 25th anniversary next year, so you'll be hearing about some sort of a shindig coming along, but 25 great years of serving Alaska Native young people. I'll also add that, uh, the, this, the slideshow here I'm going to show you, uh, has got a few updates that I'll read as we move along here. But, uh, our, our mission has always been to empower Alaska natives through biblically-based higher education and Christian formation to pursue excellence in character learning and service as followers of Christ. Next slide. Back way in the day, uh, Leonard Ballard's home, anybody ever been to Leonard Ballard's home before we bought it? He's quite the character here on the Kenai Peninsula, but we purchased it from him, 10 and a half acres with that 8,400 square foot building, including an indoor swimming pool inside, and we opened our, uh, first class just five days after 9/11, which was a difficult time because nobody could fly in. Go ahead, next slide. Opened with 22 students, four different states, seven different ethnic groups, 80% of those Alaska Native, and 16 of us were self-supporting faculty and staff. We just, uh, we're a one-year non-accredited Bible college for Alaska Native young people back then. Next. But now we have 29 and a half acres, 28 different building projects built mainly by the volunteer labor, and I, we mentioned, uh, did the Dave Ramsey scream there, we're debt-free. We've added two 36-bed dorms, three cabins, four apartment buildings now, Arden Hope Counseling Center, Peninsula Conference Center, our small chapel, a six-classroom building, shop, eight-car garage, a yurt, of course, because we're Alaska, we have to have a yurt, and this wonderful athletics center, and this, uh, spa coming online is a full gym wellness center, so all kinds of lifting and running stuff. Go ahead. We do have a state-of-the-art classroom building with a science laboratory, a computer laboratory, then four classrooms. Next. And then the conference center, many of you have been inside the dining hall, we include that in the conference center, but we rent out this facility, a 72-bed dormitory and the 150-seat dining room. Next. I love this picture because it shows, uh, the dots, and of course, anywhere where, uh, the ocean and the river meets together is the best place for our Alaska Native friends to live, and so our students have come from all of these villages across Alaska, mainly in the west and the southwest. Next slide. Uh, today we have 53 full-time, part-time volunteers, interns, and adjunct faculty who serve our students, growing from a half million to now 3.3 million, investing heavily in our community, including bringing up those 300 volunteers that spend a lot of money in our two cities here when they come up. Next slide. 888 is the new number of students that have attended from 2001, and out of the 253 villages, cities, and towns with the zip code in Alaska, 102 are represented, and almost half of Alaska has had representation at ACC. The big year, of course, was 2012 when we earned our accredited status from the Association for Biblical Higher Education, our creditor, we're then authorized by the Alaska Commission on Post-Secondaire Education, and of course, US Department of Education, which means we're fully legit, okay? Next slide. A vision statement, we ought to be the premier college of choice for Alaska Native students so that our graduates follow and serve Christ within the church and larger society. So when a student graduates from a village, uh, school, maybe four graduates, 10 graduates, we hope that they'll, will be their first choice to, to, to join as a gap year between the village and maybe going to the four-year university. Next slide. We offer four associate degrees, as you heard, behavioral health is our number one, uh, outside of our general education, uh, Christian ministry, the professional education, a lot of our students end up in the classrooms. A big deal here, update, we now offering vocational tech courses. We started our first one this year, Marine Motors with Yamaha, and next year we'll be starting large equipment operation. We do offer, of course, a life-changing education for these students to help them to go on to get their four-year degree, enter the workforce, or possibly return back to rural Alaska. We are residential community, our highest enrollment was pre-COVID, we grew every year for 20 years of 104, and we do offer a very intensive academic support for our students because all, most all of our students are academically unprepared for college rigor. Some of them will take a full year of courses to prepare them for their college rigor. Next slide. We are not a four-year college, again, but an associate of arch-degree granting institution like a community college. Uh, we are not an online college, we're not a place where anybody can teach, all of our professors are masters and doctoral-degreed professors, and we're not just for Alaska natives, about 90%, I said, but we invite a lot of people to join us, even from the Lesser 48, come up and join us occasionally. And of course, my favorite line, we are not a cult at the end of Royal Place off of East Poppy Lane. The conference center, again, you've been inside of it, next slide. It is an amazing opportunity for the community to use as a conference center. We have cabins, the dormitories, apartment-style housing, a total of 152 beds on our campus, that 200-seat conference room, the dining option, and then catering. I will add that between us and the dormitories across the street at KPC, we would, uh, have over 200, uh, beds available for people for conference use. Go ahead. You saw New Hope Counseling Center, we offer, uh, professional free, uh, for our students, 24/7, as was mentioned. I've been going now since 2006 with the community, about 3,300 client hours in recent years logged, and it is be for service also to our community. In fact, 75% of all the people who walk through the door are from the local community here. They might have veterans insurance, private insurance, or the EAP programs, which I know that the borough offers, not sure about the city. Go ahead. Always our, our, our great neighbor commitment, our doors are open to the community, we don't want to have any walls, everybody's welcome anytime to come in and rent, be a part of events on our campus. We wish to serve the greater Saldana-Kenai community with our facilities, our staff, our students, to bring a better life to all who live here. In fact, if you see our students and getting out of vans at the food bank, or at an elders' home, or over at the Salvation Army or somewhere, they're doing their 10 hours per semester of service for the community, and so they're very involved in the community. Next slide. Athletic Center, a big deal here, an update for you, it's, uh, available for workout cardio use, of course, basketball, we have three basketball courts, volleyball, two of those, we have six pickleball courts, and, uh, available for larger community events with a walking track around it, two-lane walking track that I get a lot of use in the winter. So there it is, and I hope that you'll come by and stick your head in there, it's a pretty cool, uh, facility. Next slide. That was our dedication day, there's Merrill with his camera, I see, all right? Next slide. Uh, we are building this, uh, this month, actually, starting a new lobby on the front, it's 1,750 square feet, so we'll be able to have events in the lobby as well as using the gym simultaneously. Next slide. And that's what it'll look like when she's all done, hopefully in about a year, our volunteers will be helping next summer to wrap it up. But it's really about the students, and here's this year's graduating class of, uh, of 11, and our staff and faculty standing behind all smiling and happy and exhausted. Next slide. And if you've driven by recently, a brand-new sign, we finally owned the property on the corner so we could put up our sign, and that's a beautiful lit sign in the evening, including Poppy Lane Flowers, our neighbor. And I believe that's the last slide, is that right? Thanks, Johnny. Always available to take any questions you might have or comments about, uh, Alaska Christian College.
Any questions or comments from the council? Mr. Carey?
I want to thank you for all you do and for your staff, the many people. Do you have any breakdown approximately in terms of the percentage of students that do go back to their, uh, their village where they came from as compared to not?
Yeah, thank you. Two different categories, remember, Carey, uh, first of all, those who graduate and receive their AA degree, uh, a lot of them continue on their four-year, although they stay in Anchorage, Saldana-Kenai to get jobs. The ones who have not finished the two-year, three-year, four-year, they have attempted, um, see about 75% of them go back to their villages where they subsist and they live with their families.
Excellent, thank you very much.
And you see a lot of them in the community, you know, you see them around town, they're always over at Fred Meyer, so, yeah. Or shortstop, yes, that's right, chief.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much, Dr. Hamilton.
Great, we'll be back next year with another update.
Hope to see you before then.
Oh, well, that's probably true, too.
Uh, next item, uh, under presentation with prior notice is, uh, CAPED Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, uh, presented by Dr. Rodriguez, and she will be appearing by Zoom.
Thank you so much, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you about, um, CAPEDs and do... Apologize, all my, everything reset there, um, for me. So I wanted to say thank you for allowing me to come and talk to you about the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that CAPED is currently putting together. My name is Alyssa Rodriguez, um, and I am a contractor for CAPED. And I wanted to start off with the purpose of coming and talking with you today is really to increase awareness about the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. There has been one in the past, and CAPED is currently entering into the process of creating a new one. And what a SEDS is, as it's commonly referred to, is a roadmap. It's a roadmap, um, a strategy for where a region wants to go. And what we are doing with this one is we are trying to get as much public engagement as possible in order for it to really be meaningful and represent the needs and desires of all of the communities on the peninsula. We want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to share what worked in the past, um, what their vision of the future is. When we look at different scenarios, what do they think the priorities should be if we face different futures? And so I would like to quickly share, um, and I do have the ability, I wanted to quickly share the website, because for those who aren't able to come and listen to a live presentation and engage, um, in the survey live, we have created a survey that is online, and it's at CAPED's website, so it's, um, Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District, cape.org backslash SEDS, and I will go ahead and share my screen right now. And so if you click on this link, you can see the, you can see the website up here, but if you click on the link, it takes you to the, the actual survey, where you can go through and you can provide all sorts of feedback on how CAPED did over the last five years in terms of achieving the goals that they had set out to achieve. Um, and then again, where does the community want to go in the future? And so as council members, we wanted to engage with you, to have you encourage your, your citizens, your stakeholders, those you represent, to engage in this way, to make sure that as a roadmap for the future comes out, they see themselves reflected in it, they see their needs, they see the community that they desire to create in this plan. Um, the other piece of this is that this is, um, it is required by the US EDA, and when you engage and you create a SEDS document, it then opens up, uh, funding for a variety of projects. And so a great example of this would be the Saldana Riverfront redevelopment, and so it was included in the last SEDS, and, um, it, it opens the door to potential EDA funds and those sorts of things. If you can reference back to a SEDS and say, look, this was part of our community and our region's long-term economic strategy, this project matters in this way, this is the economic impact it's going to have, and that could open up doors for funding. So it is part that, you know, you want everyone to engage and see themselves in the plan, but it's also you want to make sure that those projects that are really important to your community are included so that, um, if the opportunity comes up for them to be federally funded through the EDA in particular, uh, it's, it's available to you because those projects were included in that Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Um, the last two presentations really highlighted, uh, both with the declaration, the, the care that Saldana has for its community, and the growth that has occurred in Saldana, and we really would love to make sure that as many people as possible in Saldana provide their feedback, um, engage in this process, whether or not they're able to make it to, again, a live presentation. We will also host Zoom-based presentations, so if people have to go at kind of an odd hour or something like that, that there will be more opportunities for them to engage live, even if it's virtually. Uh, but then for anybody who just really can't break away, we also have, uh, this web-based survey. And so it, it's asking all of the same questions, they just have a little bit of additional context in terms of how the questions are stated, so that if you don't have, you know, me or Cassidy or Caitlin kind of talking about what's going on, you're able to get all that context from the additional information that's in those questions. Um, I can pause there and see if the council has any questions for me about the SEDS, um, about the, the process or the survey.
Any questions for Dr. Rodriguez? I just have one quick one. How long is this survey going to, uh, last?
Yeah, the plan, thank you, that's a wonderful question. The plan is for the survey to be up and live through September, um, so there is a nice big window for people to come and, and participate.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You have anything else to add?
I do not, I, I just appreciate the opportunity to come and share, uh, what CAPED is doing for the, the creation of the new Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, and again, encourage people to have anyone you know participate so that it's truly a reflection of what the community wants, um, in terms of the economic future for Saldana and the economic future for the region as a whole. So thank you for the opportunity to come in and talk to you about it, and again, if you have any questions, um, Caitlin and Cassidy at CAPED can answer any questions, um, but you're also welcome to reach out to me as well.
Okay, I'll give a call.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, and I appreciate your input. I'm wondering, I was on the board, it's been 15 years since I was on it, um, but as a community, we've seen fishing and tourism and petrochemical and healthcare, the service sector, we've seen different developments during different times in our history. From the information that you're gathering, and you have gathered, I'll say, for the last five years, is there any particular emphasis that we should anticipate, I'll say, for the next five years, uh, in any of those sectors, and is there any other new sector? Whereas for many people, they still think it's just simply fishing, they don't understand tourism and birding, they don't understand, um, the different aspects of, uh, healthcare and the service sector, and so, does the data that you're collecting and that you anticipate collecting indicate any new growth areas particularly? My understanding, the data from the state is the Matsu and the Kenai Peninsula, the only place growing, all the rest areas of the state are declining in population, at least in the last three years. Any particular new economic areas for the Kenai Peninsula or particularly for Saldana?
Thank you for that question, I think that's a wonderful and in-depth question. I, the few things that come to mind initially, and it's always kind of hard to, to predict what's coming, to predict the future, um, but aquaculture is one that has come up frequently, and mariculture in general is something, um, the state as a whole got a, a lot of, uh, a lot of funding to really focus on mariculture, uh, and the Kenai Peninsula was, or Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District was instrumental in both getting that funding and, and really designing what that was going to look like. So I would say mariculture as a whole is, is one of those, you know, if we want to call it an emerging sector or an opportunity for growth, maritime services really as a whole is another area that we could look at for growth. Uh, and then there's, there's also been, um, a focus on trying to attract remote workers, um, which, you know, i- in some cases, people get really excited about it, and others, um, you know, people might be kind of down on it, not really wanting to, to necessarily bring people who might, um, I don't know, who might just kind of live here but not, not really be as involved because they're not part of the local workforce, um, but it does give an opportunity to bring in funds from outside, um, and can potentially be a little insulated to local economic shocks because those funds are, you know, that income is coming from outside. So those are a few things that come to mind. I will say that as you go through the survey, um, we provide a, a variety of kind of future scenarios for people to think through, and the purpose of it is so that, essentially so we can be prepared for almost any future that could come our way. Uh, we're trying to use scenarios playing to really think about, you know, well, what if, what if an LNG pipeline came through? What should our priorities be? What if we had an influx of new families? What if we had to import LNG? Um, so we think through a variety, or I should say, we invite the respondents of the survey to think through these different scenarios and identify what they think the economic priorities should be in these, in these, you know, various future scenarios, with the idea being that once we have all that data, we can look at it and say, okay, well, regardless of what scenario we look at, we recognize that housing, for example, is at the top. That's an issue that we really need to prioritize. And so I can say, you know, from the data that we've collected so far, housing is at the top of the list, um, and, and workforce development is close to the top of the list. Childcare is, is, I want to say, I want to say childcare's third. Um, so we are getting a sense of both what matters in these, uh, different potential futures and how people think we can best set ourselves up for success, uh, as a region. And then we can also say, these are the kind of smaller or more niche, um, economic industries or sub-industries perhaps, that we could invest in, we might want to look towards for growth, um, and, and at a, at least see what opportunities they have within them. Um, the Kenai Peninsula Borough has in general been more diverse than the state, um, uh, gosh, for decades and decades and decades, and... and decades and decades. And it really has helped to make the region more resilient and insulate it from a variety of economic shocks. And we've seen that over the years that when the state is kind of hit by a challenge, it's not that the Kenai Peninsula Borough wouldn't feel it at all, but the losses are less. And when there's growth opportunities, the growth is more. And so we already have a fairly diverse economy. And so if we had these little additional pockets, these little additional industries that we might be able to invest in and give attention to, it could even further insulate the region, make it more resilient in terms of its economy. And then potentially you might end up hitching your wagon to an industry that really takes off, and that would just be fantastic. I, I think hopefully I got towards an answer in there in that, in that response.
Go ahead, Mr. Carey.
Your response was excellent and it was very comprehensive. I hope as you continue and doing this survey and examining it, you will look to find strategies to hold on to or to bring back the young people who have grown up here. You're mentioning certainly of housing and of childcare, I think spoke, speak to that very well. But whatever we can do, my bias, I want to hold on to all the young people that grew up here as possible. I want to see them come back here. And so any strategies that are shown by that survey to assist in that process, I'd be interested. Thank you. And again, your response was excellent.
Thank you. Glad to hear. And we do, we do actually have a few questions in there in the survey. If you take the time to go through it, would love to get everyone's feedback. But we do have some questions in there that specifically ask about what, what, what do we need here that isn't here or those sorts of things. So we aim to get at that question.
Mr. Chilton?
Maybe this was addressed, I missed it, but was this going to be added to the Capehead website? I'm just pulling it up right now and I don't see it on the front page anywhere. And I assume that you'd have a link there.
Yes. So I can put the link, maybe I can. I'll have to double check. I should be able to put the link in the chat. And if not, it's, it's capehead.org backslash SEDS, S, sorry, C E D S. And if you navigate, I can share my screen again really quickly. If you navigate to on their sidebar, let's see, capehead.org?
Oh, I found it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So capehead.org, click on SEDS, and then it brings up information about the SEDS as a whole and the, and the survey link is right there. Capehead also has some small flyers that they will be passing around and sharing, especially at summer community events and whatnot, that have a little QR code that folks can scan that'll take them right to it. So the Mentimeter platform that we're using for the survey works equally well on a phone as it does on the computer. So.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Moving on to the next agenda item is public comments and presentations, items other than those appearing on the agenda, three minutes per speaker, 20 minutes aggregate. Are there any members from the public would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Anyone here in the audience wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing no one here, we'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised under Zoom. So we'll move on to Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any members, excuse me, are there any representatives from the borough and or the state legislature would like to address the council? And I see no one here in the audience, nor do I see anyone on Zoom. Moving on to the next items, public hearings. First one, Ordinance 2025-011, establishing a centralized fee schedule for the city of Soldatna and amending the Soldatna Municipal Code to reference the fee schedule introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Ms. Hutchings?
I move to enact Ordinance 2025-011.
Second please. Thank you, Mr. Carey. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the city clerk who wrote this ordinance. And we spoke about the idea and she ran with it and wrote it, and I really do appreciate that. The ordinance in acts language that allows us basically to establish a complete fee schedule and removes the fees from the code, other than some very specific areas. But it removes the fees from the code and moves them into the overall fee schedule that you will adopt through the budget process. It's actually going to be a standalone resolution through the budget process. And so that way, part of it is sometimes the fees get conflicting. They conflict in what fee schedule we have and sometimes the code. And it's a lot more nimble to be able to change a fee schedule than the code itself. So our desire is to also, so it streamlines for the staff, but also the public as well. There'll be one document with all the fees in that, in that one document. Like I said, there are a few exceptions. And one of those were the expansion fees that we had dealt with probably a year, year and a half ago, expanding water sewer services. We decided to leave those in the code at this time because that will be a part of an overall comprehensive discussion. When we do our rate study at a later period, those fees will be brought into that. So we left them as is. There's a lot of code language in there that supports how you do the fees and taking those out at this time would cause some confusion. So that's one of those that stayed in, but the rest of the fees are now in a fee schedule and they are referenced in the code.
All right. Thank you for the report. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on Ordinance 2025-011? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on that? Okay, taking a look at Zoom, I see no hands raised there. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city manager, please. And look at these. And again, I, you know, very clearly we centralized. Were there any areas, were there any areas of fees that we either lowered or got rid of? Or are there any particular substantial areas of fees that we raised?
Thank you for that question. I don't have the fee schedule in front of me at this time, but part of what occurred was that each department director went through their portion, we called it, their portion of the fees and adjusted them accordingly. Some of them hadn't been adjusted for 10 to 15 years. So they were increased. We were mindful, though, make it a reasonable increase. So some yes did go up. I cannot think of off the top of my head that any went down. Looking at the clerk as well. Some did increase. And that legislation will be before you at the next meeting, and I'll be able to point that out more clearly at that time. I don't have it in front of me.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? I do have one. Later on in the agenda, we have the ordinance on planning and zoning, and they have new fees in there. Are those going to need to be incorporated into this ordinance now at a later date?
Those fees are in the fee schedule, the adopted fee schedule. So that is something that procedurally, we'll, I'm going to work with the clerk on because if this, the other ordinances are postponed, we will need to address that and we will address it and bring it back to you, whatever needs to be addressed. Does that answer your question, Mr. Mayor?
I'll have to think about it.
Okay, okay. Me too.
This ordinance, if it passes,
Yes.
It's always already going to have fees in it that we have not actually approved yet.
No, this ordinance doesn't have any fees in it. It actually removes, it creates a reference to the fee schedule, maybe turned as established in the current city of Soldatna fee schedule is where the fees lie. That's where they live now, is in the fee schedule.
All right.
But I do, with the ordinance, the planning and zoning ones, there is reference in those ordinances that come back to, I don't know, procedurally, we're going to have to work on those references and we'll work on that and bring that back to you.
All right. We'll call for the vote on the motion.
Sorry, my elbows. Carey?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
You have four yes votes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-011 passes on a 4-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 25, 2025-012, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $76,000 in the general fund to replace the city's HVAC management software introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the adoption of Ordinance 2025-012, increasing estimated revenue and appropriations by $26,000 for the general fund to replace the city's HVAC management software.
May I have a second, please?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This appropriation is necessary mostly because of outdated software. The, the city uses, we utilize, excuse me, software developed by Siemens called Insight to manage our automation of our heating, ventilation and air conditioning systems in our city buildings. It was implemented in 2010 and the IT department manages the host server for the application and it is running on a Windows Server 2008, which is quite outdated. It's a virtualized machine and IT has been managing it and keeping it going. However, what we discovered is we're going to be bringing the field house online with the same system, or not exact same, but within this kind of platform. And because of that, we are no longer able to continue on what we've been doing. We're just too far outdated. We can't get any more updates and there isn't any more support available for this product. So we do need to upgrade and move into the latest platform.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on Ordinance 2025-012? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised there. Having no one who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Chilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just brief comment on this. So I actually work in cybersecurity. I'd say that in addition to the operational benefits of updating the software, one thing that would be considered is the security benefits of it. The particular operating system that was referenced in this is woefully dated. And in the industry today, HVACs, GATA systems are commonly one of the top targets for municipalities. And I can assure you that the costs that the city would be subject to if we were compromised would far exceed the cost of this. So it's totally reasonable and I fully support it.
Any further comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Chilton?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
You have four yes votes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-012 passes on a 4-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2025-013, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $169,564 in the general fund to replace body worn cameras and in-car cameras and to replace interview room and DUI processing rooms camera recording systems introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Mrs. Hutchings?
I move to enact Ordinance 2025-013.
May I have a second, please? Mr. Carey, thank you. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask our chief of police to speak to this item.
Thank you. First time speaking, anytime sitting. Just a little background, I think, is important here. In 2023, our department under then Chief Meek sought to replace, and I brought some visual aids, sought to replace some old, some aging cameras. And so we had some body worn cameras. These are Axon body worn cameras. And they were about 10 years old. And we no longer carry these. This is a Gen one Axon body camera. And, and so he wanted to, and we had watch guard, we had a different, a totally different system in our cars that was also aging. And, and our chief wanted to replace those and do so in emerging fashion. So we didn't have two separate systems. And in an effort to try to streamline, so, and also to, to limit that we carry, we carry a camera usually in our pocket and we carried a digital recorder. And he was trying to do all of that with this. So we wanted this to kind of be our audio recording device, to be our photo capturing device and our body worn camera. And then this also linked to a car camera in the car. It was all one system. And this was kind of new technology that was coming along. This was Visual Labs at the time. They since sold out to VersaTerm, a different company. And so that kind of took fruition in earlier this year. So the purchase, I think, was in the fall of 2024. That's about when that kind of happened, or the, excuse me, the spring of 2004 is when these really went into place. We started to have a lot of problems with these. First, you can see the difference of these. These are carried on the officer's vest. These are heavy and large. They're, they're usually, they're usually attached to a, a small thing like this that wears out on officers' uniforms. They, and I've kind of written down some of these problems. And so we started experiencing problems and we came up to a, a renewal period. And so we had an initial fee where we bought all these, all the equipment. And then we came up to that yearly renewal fee where we, I, now the chief, was faced with a decision because I'd been having all these problems that I'll talk about if you want to hear about them. And I wanted, I didn't want to continue throwing good money after bad essentially. And I felt like we needed to replace this. It was a tough decision for me because I was new. I'm very thorough and cautious and I don't want to make a bad decision. And so we did a lot of research. And so we researched three different companies. But to get to the problems first, we had linking issues. So these had, this, this body worn camera had to link with a car camera. And you would set up that link, but often that link would, would go away. And so often when this gets activated, when your body worn camera gets activated, it also turns your car camera on. So there's both recording, just for an officer's safety standpoint, that wasn't happening all the time. Other times this would, these had to be, receive updates and those updates would come when an officer got a call. So they'd, they'd be 1019, they'd be en route to a call, oftentimes an emergency call. At the same time, this was receiving an update and therefore it was useless. It didn't even work. That was common. We had power mute problems. Sometimes the, you know, you couldn't get it to turn on. Sometimes on a scene, officers might investigate, they might, one talks to a suspect, one talks to a victim, the officer's kind of sidelined and they sidebar and they talk to each other about, hey, what did she say? What did he say? They mute these during those conversations. Those conversations are often protected when they're muted. But if that mute button doesn't work, it captures what the officers say. And sometimes it might be, oh yeah, he's a knot head, or it might have some disparaging comments that we often say to one another, but not the public. Those were being captured on these cameras. The audio, but the other problem is if I, if we go to a scene, say we go to a domestic violence scene, I respond, I pull up to the curb, I go into a house and I am investigating a scene inside a house. My car cam, my car is sitting on the street. This didn't have the choice not to activate that car camera. And so while I'm inside an apartment or a home recording, so is my car. My car is recording cars driving by on the street. It's recording nothing over and over and over again. That data adds up to into huge piles of memory that are evidence. We can't just, just, we can't just electively discard it because it's part of our case. It shows when we arrived, it shows some things. That became cumbersome data wise. Our NICE system, and so the Department of Law implemented, and this was new, that came after the implementation of this, they implemented what's called NICE, and it's our data sharing program that we use to submit reports, videos, audio, all kinds of, all of our case information to the district attorney's office. That NICE system works, they work well with your big providers, like in the car world, they work well with Chevy, they work well with Ford. They did not work well with this company. And so our evidence, our, our police clerk is our digital evidence person, and she is tasked with submitting all of that information to our district attorney's office. And when you upload information like a video, you give it a property number, you give it a date and maybe some kind of a label, you know, is it a criminal incident, non-criminal, all these different labels, those labels have redaction stamps to them, you know, of how long they're kept indefinitely, 10 years, five years, however long. That property number and all that stuff would often get lost in that transfer where she was trying to download it into the NICE program. And, and she'd have to go back and manually put in the property number or manually do some of that stuff. And that's, that's super risky because it invites mistakes. It's very time consuming. The, the download times for her would often timeout. So she would sit while this was downloading video from their software program. So she would sit while this was downloading video from their software program into the NICE program. It would, she'd wait for an hour and then it would timeout. She'd have to start all over again. There were lots of problems with NICE, not just in our department. Other agencies were having problems with NICE. They still are. But this became very, very exasperated with with this company. Also retention issues I talked about. Based on all of that, based on, we didn't plan for a $25,000 renewal fee. It wasn't something that was planned in the beginning. That was something that come comes, and that's like a licensing, a software licensing fee that's annually. And so we started looking at Axon. Axon's like the leader. It's like the Lexus of of Chevy or whatever. It's the nice cream of the crop. They build the tasers, they build body worn cameras, all kinds of great fancy tools that we love. Motorola also, we looked at Motorola. We had their engineers, we had Zoom sessions where we we studied Axon, Motorola and Panasonic. And so Panasonic is really Baycom. Panasonic is who we kind of chose. And Panasonic is the company that builds Toughbooks. You know, they build all kinds of stuff for law enforcement too. They are not as well known as Axon and Motorola. It would be really safe for me to say, let's pick Motorola, let's pick Axon. They're a lot more money. You know, for the cloud based systems, they're 250 grand for the on prem is what we chose. And so we worked with our IT department, Bryce and our IT department to see can our our existing servers handle this data download? And so our IT department spoke with the folks at Baycom with Panasonic. And they worked it out. But yeah, we can do that on prem and we can save some money by doing it with our own servers versus a cloud based system. Cloud is very nice, you know, I'm just, I'm giving you, giving you everything that we that we looked at. The benefits that I loved about Panasonic that were in addition to the others and not just price. And I have these, I don't know if these, this is the letter that I wrote to the council that I could share. Some really cool things that that would be of great assistance to us. In this, there, so the the Baycom, the Panasonic comes with a trigger. And so first of all, there, this Panasonic system does everything that this does. It combines the two, the car camera, the body camera, they are the same. But it gives you the the choice to turn one on or not, and not the other. And if I'm going too long, I'm sorry. I write even longer. It has a sensor trigger. And so when you pull your, if you, if you pull your gun, it it automatically activates your body camera. That is a huge safeguard for me. Because oftentimes in those scenarios, you don't, you might not have, if you're pulling your gun, you might not have time to activate your body worn camera. And hopefully you have activated and we and we try to, but sometimes you just don't have that opportunity. So that was huge. That's not something that Motorola or Axon offered. It also has a, it's called a fleece, a Fleet G4 sensor. Back when I was a cop in like 2000, this was my dream idea to make a million dollars. And oftentimes when you're an officer, you're sitting in the car in a parking lot and maybe catching up on some reports, you're vulnerable to threat. You can't really see behind you, you can't see to the side of you. And so I always wanted something like up when you watch Top Gun, when the the Tom Cruise is flying the jet through the sky, he can see the MiGs around him. And I thought, how cool would that be as a police officer to to do that? I was just an idiot. I don't know how to do that kind of stuff. But somebody figured it out now. And so this G4 sensor alerts that it has 360 cameras on the, this system comes with that kind of camera, much like you see in the new cars, you know, where you're backing up and you can see your whole car somehow it does it. It'll show and alert the officer if somebody is approaching the car. That's really, really cool and a great safe thing. It comes with a redaction tower. The other companies also have redaction software, but it was all cloud based or you had to go onto their their software. This one, we get a whole redaction system. And so we're doing lots of redaction work. Especially with our First Amendment auditors, tremendous amounts of redaction work. Lots of public and FOIA requests that we get. We're we're filtering the, what we, what we put out on our videos, what we put out on our audios. And and just this past year with all the First Amendment auditor FOIA requests, we've had to farm out some of that work to other companies. This allows us to do it in house. It allows us to train. They will send their folks to us. They actually do four car installs. You know, they'll teach our shop guys how to do it. They'll teach Bryce, you know, how to teach us how to do this, this redaction stuff. So. And then the other two things are our cameras in house. And so we have two interview rooms in our department with an archaic DVR recording system. It often gets very confusing. There have been times like we had a homicide years and years ago. We put that suspect in our interview room and the officer struggled with how to turn on the recorder. Because it's kind of confusing. You have to go into the software and click this one and this one and this one. And and if you don't do it frequently enough, you forget. And then you're reliant on the instructions and and we're losing valuable video. The system now that with Panasonic is a light switch and the system's on and it's easy to download. That's in our interview rooms, in our DUI processing room, which we use very frequently. We bring suspects in, they sit at a bench and we walk them through the data master process where they provide a breath of their sample, you know, a sample of their breath. We have an archaic camera in there. It's, I think it's a 2002 bought video recorder with the tapes, you know, with the thumb drive, not a thumb drive, but a a little memory disc, a memory stick that you stick in. Those were used in our car cameras back in 2002 when I first, I started in 2000. We were using these, these cameras. That's what records our interview room in our DUI processing room. We also have in that room, to be fair, like a camera you see out here that Bryce has installed for security reasons, but it's not built for gathering that in, you know, data sharing type stuff. That's why I liked Panasonic. I felt it wasn't quite Alexis, but it was because of its well knownness. But the, their engineers offered to come and teach you. They would do a demonstration if you want one. They are phenomenal. They have been, they they've been like Axon and Motorola will build you, they sell a package. And I felt like Panasonic said, what do you need? And and we'll walk, they walked us through and and we could pick and choose all the bells and whistles like the trigger thing, the G4 sensor. If we don't want it, we don't have to have it. It was just, it was really spectacular. So. There you have it.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on ordinance 2025-013? Anyone here in the audience? I see no one. I look at Zoom and I see no hands raised in Zoom. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Any council comments? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I found what the manager provided, and again, the pages from yourself were extremely helpful. It gave me a real sense of what was going on and and understanding. Second, you just did an excellent presentation. I found that also extremely helpful. You you answered questions before I had a chance to ask you of them. Such things as, again, length of time that you have to hold on to things. And again, the difficulty in the room. And and so again, I just want to say that I found you very thorough. I want to thank the manager. You're doing a great job at this employee in terms of hiring him and also on having him provide us information. This was very helpful to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chilton?
I'd also like to say it was a very thorough presentation. You had me sold about a quarter of the way through your appeal. So thank you. I do appreciate the diligence and the consideration of the options on this one and not just springing for the one that's obviously the most expensive flashy one out on the market. I also, you know, working in IT, I I do see a lot of value in going towards on prem solutions. The, you know, the draw of cloud being the convenience of it, but then they draw you in and then they capture you with rates to sustain it that are not always sustainable moving forward. So that's excellent that we're going to stay on prem, just not only for the cost effectiveness, but just the control of our own data. Two questions for you, though, and maybe you covered this and I might have missed it. With this system, does it automatically trigger recordings when your officers are getting out of the cars on scene like the old one did? Or is it something that they have to manually toggle on unless they draw their gun?
They have to manually toggle it, yeah.
Got it. And then in addition to that, is, does the department have a a formal policy on the use of these cameras that's accessible to the public?
Correct. Yes, yes. I don't know. Public wise, I wouldn't say why not, but it's our body worn camera policy, yes.
Got it. Well, I, again, I think this is a fantastic solution and I I think it does well for our community and just reassuring them that we're recovering this effectively. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Ms. Whackler?
Is there any useful life for the ones that you deemed unsuccessful?
Yes, great question. Thank you. Yes, so our IT department believes that, so nobody, nobody even has heard of these. You know, it was like the, I'm not a Kia fan, so I always use the Kia. I don't know if anybody's a Kia fan. I always use, this was a Kia to me, to me, not Alexis. And so there's not a lot of use to other depart, I don't know of anybody, other departments that are that want this. You know, they're all, they're getting their backs on and the others. But this is a, this is a Samsung phone. And so we essentially have two of these. One for the car, one for the the body cam. And so there is a purpose. We just have to find the right person to sell it to. So there's some value out of this. And and we didn't pay the full five years when we got this. We just paid for the equipment in the first year. You know, it's not like we're out for five years. So a small price to to pay, I guess. Maybe a large price to pay for that. But yes, I think we can sell them. But pennies on the dollar probably.
My comment, I'm probably date myself here. When I started in law enforcement, no one even knew how to spell two way radio. Tape recorder was a reel to reel, which we didn't carry around with you. And as far as calls, we actually still had lights on the street corners. And if the light turned on, you went to a call box and called in on. That was our two way radio, other than the one that was in the car. Things have changed to the better, much better.
Thank you.
So we'll call for the vote. Roll call.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
You have four yes votes.
Ordinance 2025-013 passes on a 4-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is new business and we will move on to ordinance 2025-015, amending the Soldat municipal code, chapter 17.10, zoning code by establishing a new subchapter 17.10.268, Riverfront Mixed Use RMU District and amending sections of SMC titles 1, 15 and 17 to establish standards for the Riverfront Mixed Use RMU Zoning District introduced by the city manager. Public hearing is scheduled for June 11th. May I have a motion to introduce and set for public hearing? Ms. Hutchings?
Sorry. I would like to introduce ordinance 2025-015 and set the public hearing for September 10th, 2025. And my reason is we are
Need a second.
I'll second.
All right, go ahead and state your motion.
The the reason I'm asking for this is we are in the middle of summer in Soldat, Alaska. We have council members that are not here. We have people that are vacationing and we don't, I think, get the full compliment that we should have for the discussion on this ordinance. And my big problem is I went through this ordinance and I found so many conflicting restrictions. Some said you could have handicapped, others said you couldn't have a convalescent home. So I'm, I'm just really confused. I think we really need to put this off until September. And I would love to have a work session with planning and zoning so that we can go over this. Because I think there are some things that are just not being realized. And this is a really big thing because you are changing so much in this riverfront district. And it's going to affect a lot of property owners. And I know that we've had a a large amount of reviews, but I sometimes go to these reviews and there might be one P and Z person there. Or the people that I'm seeing there don't even live in the city. And as much as we need to be embracing everybody, it is our city. We are a small city. We have to make sure that we can still meet all of the requirements to take care of our roads and to take care of, I mean, because we have schools, we have the medical facilities, we have the post office, we have the borough seat in this, in the school district. So I think we need to look at all of this very thoroughly. And that's why I'm asking for this.
Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I did speak to Councilmember Hutchings in the last few days. Anyway, spoke with Councilmember Hutchings about this and thank you for your flexibility. Our economic development director will be taking some time off at the end of September. And so we chose this date. I spoke with her as well and chose this date. I also spoke with her about a joint work session. Tentative date is August 27th, but more information will follow at a later date. But thank you.
Are there any council comments? Mr. Chilton?
I guess following up on that, I'd like to know, I was going to ask about potential concerns with delaying it. You mentioned our P and Z director is going to be out in September. I don't really see a rush in this. If we were to, if we had to, if we had to delay till after she got back, when would that put us on the calendar?
Eighteen weeks. She can take 18 weeks after that. I'm not quite sure of her timeframe. I don't believe she plans on that, but that can do that. And it'd be 18 weeks at the end of September. So moving forward 18 weeks.
Yes, I would pose a question to you alternatively to delaying it till September. Could we maybe consider sometime in August before our P and Z director is out?
I just feel like August is too soon. We're still, people are traveling. And so I really, if I could put it, if I could have put it forward to October, the first of November, I would think it would be better. But with Ms. Mitchell coming up with a baby, I don't know what her maternity leave would be.
Any other comments from the council? I have one administration. So tentatively, we would have a work session with, I mean, with the planning and zoning on August 27th and then have this in front of us at the September 10th meeting.
Correct. And we did discuss other dates as well, one being August 13th, but that is the week of AML. So we won't be available for that. I'll, and it is the time off that she is entitled to take. We did talk about moving to November, but she will not be available. Obviously, we really do need her in this discussion.
Well, I kind of like to, if we're going to pass this ordinance on for a public hearing, I'd kind of like to have a date certain set so that it's, the word is already out there.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that Councilmember Hutchings' motion was to set the public hearing for September 10th.
Oh, I just heard September. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We can be flexible on the work session, but
All right. So that's fine. I I just heard September and I didn't hear a date, so.
Follow up question if I may, just to confirm, September 10th, our P and Z director would be there for that? Or is that, okay, got it.
Any other comments from the council? Call for the vote.
Chilton?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
You have four yes votes.
Okay, ordinance 2025-015, and I'm not going to say as amended, but with the new public hearing date is set for 10 September. And it passed on a 4-0 vote. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is ordinance 2025-017, amending the official zoning map to rezone the 50 acre portion of the riverfront development area between the Sterling Highway and the Kenai River and the David Dothet Veterans Memorial Park Bridge and Burt Street, the Riverfront Mixed Use RMU District introduced by the city manager with a public hearing scheduled on June 11th, 2025. May I have a motion to introduce and set for public hearing?
I'll make a motion to
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Carey. And comments from Ms. Hutchings?
She needs to refine her motion. Her motion is not to introduce said on June 11th.
My motion, yeah. My motion is to also put this for public hearing on September 10th because it's a companion ordinance to the one that we just moved to the 10th of September.
So this will just change the public hearing So this will just change the public hearing date to September 10th. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the, those dates will work for us and as I said, we'll follow up on the joint work session dates.
Are there any council comments? Call for the vote on the motion.
Carrie?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
You have four yes votes.
Ordinance 2025 dash zero one seven passes on a four zero vote with a public hearing set for September the 10th. Next item on the agenda. Mayor and council reports. Mayor's reports and proclamations, I have a proclamation I'll be issuing on Friday, May the 30th. To celebrate Hannah East Dormos 102nd birthday. Longtime resident of Alaska. Other information, Memorial Day. Councilmember Carrie and myself participated in the Memorial Day celebration at. The cemetery and at Soldatna Creek Park and also at the Purple Heart Memorial. Very nice crowd, very good turnout, very well done and appreciate everyone who was there. Couple of weeks ago, I accepted an award from the Kenai Peninsula Foundation. Got to bring it in here, it's sitting in, I'm hoping the city clerk's office. And it's an award from the Kenai Peninsula Foundation for the efforts that the city has put forth on behalf of the entire community. Well, that's all I have for now. Next item is council reports on boards and commission and. May 22nd, 2025, Soldatna Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting, Mr. Chilton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fairly brief meeting on the 20 seconds. Some of the topics reviewed by our board for the chamber, we're mostly focused on staff changes, we've had a little bit of turnover on the board, past and upcoming, they're working through. But it looks like it's going to be in good shape moving forward, as soon as we have the stabilizers happening now. Kind of a recap on our strategic planning process, so. Couple months back, the board met and spent a whole day doing a strategic retreat to review their planning document, get that updated. It was able to come out of that with some new direction for reenergizing membership growth in the chamber in Soldatna and then also. Putting some additional focus on evaluating options for potential future visitor center replacements. That's been an often on a goal of the chamber for a very, very long time now and they have some new energy with that, so they're beginning to explore options on that again. And then other than that, staff are building up efforts for upcoming summer events, of course, the biggest being the music in the park series, so we have Levitt returning again this year and they have a whole music lineup ready to go, looks great. And then, of course, Progress Days being the other big one, so the theme this year is rhythm on the river and continuing the block party theme, which sounds like the Elks are partnering with them again to do prizes this year and it's going to be a good time. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Chilton? Okay, moving on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, two items that I have, unless you have questions, but one, I want to report on the Farnsworth Park Pavilion. I have an email from Joel about some structural jam damage that of the support posts. And because of that, the pavilion has been removed and I should add that it was built by the Soldatna Lions Club. But it has, it's 51 years old and it's been removed, in its place is. We had a tent, City of Soldatna tent, so that those who are renting the pavilion still have cover, have a covered shelter. Joel has reached out to the Lions Club and they may be interested in rebuilding, they will revisit that, the Lions will be revisiting that and get back to us at a later date. The tent looks great, though, if you drive by, it really does look great.
I missed that, which park was that, you say Farnsworth?
Farnsworth.
No, that's unfortunate. Is there potentially any opportunity that if the Lions were willing to work on replacing that, we could partner with them to maybe match funding for it, not necessarily pay for it entirely ourselves, but partner with them in cost share? Because I would love to see that replaced if ever we can, it was a beautiful pavilion, even though it was a bit dated.
There's always, you know, possibility, it sounds like that they may be interested in taking that on as a project themselves. And so Joel will hear back from them and as soon as I know more, I'll report on that.
Okay, please keep us posted.
I will, for sure.
Do we have any idea what that might cost?
I do not have a cost estimate, I don't know if you have. We don't have a cost estimate at this time, it just literally occurred and the tent went up today, so just, all of it just occurred. The second item that I wanted to report on, if I can pull this up quickly, maybe not, today, there was a. A meeting of sorts, a presentation with a KPAR, Kenai Peninsula Association of Realtors. And I attended and it was very interesting, as you know, there, just like with the SEDs, there are other. Surveys going on here in the peninsula about community needs and and other items as well. So I participated, I went, attended that meeting, I have the slide deck from, that they presented today that I will email you, but a lot of it. Has to do what is needed, what, how people like living in the area. And the respondents, I actually had quite a few respondents and I will say that everything from the SEDs. From other surveys going on, everything's coming back to housing as being an issue. All organizations that are participating and doing these surveys are finding that, so. Mayor Matickey was there and then the city manager from Kenai was there as well and we also spoke about housing and. The desire to see how municipalities can can support, knowing that we can't fully pay, but how we can support the efforts in the housing arena. Like I said, I'll send this out to you and they do plan on, we plan on having another meeting in another time, the city clerk attended as well, as well as Linda, our economic development director, it was very interesting. Again, everything points back to housing.
Any questions for the city manager? Moving on to the next agenda item is public comments, are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item?
My name is Brian Bishop and I just want to echo Ms. Hutchings. Comments on the significance of the zoning. Project where we're taking a section of property owners and treating them differently from the rest. Is going to be a significant thing that needs a lot of time and thought put into it and I just don't want to see it rushed and I'm happy to see. It's getting more time. And I like that, I don't know what you called it, that joint session thing that you're planning to do, but I think that's brilliant. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Bishop? Thank you very much. I see no one else here in the audience and I see no hands raised on Zoom. Council comments, next agenda item. We'll start with Mr. Chilton tonight.
No comments.
Mr. Carrie?
Thank you. Good meeting tonight on numerous different issues. And I certainly very much support the idea of the rezone, but what I speak to more strongly is. When we provide better protection for our law enforcement individuals, when they feel more secure, when they feel more backup. That allows them to be in an environment in which they provide more protection for the citizens. So what we did tonight in terms of saying, we want them to have up to date equipment that will allow them to do their job better, allow them to testify in court better, allow us to see what's going on. What we're really saying is we want them in their optimum. Quality of life so that they could do the best job possible for our visitors and our residents. And so again, I was very pleased with the decision we made because it's going to allow our whole community, certainly the law enforcement personnel themselves. And especially those people that they deal with, to have the highest protection possible, thank you.
Ms. Whackler?
No comment.
Ms. Hutchings?
No comment.
Next item on the agenda is executive session and there is no need for one, meeting announcements, June 4th, 2025, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at 5:30 PM. June 11th, 2025, City Council five year. CIP work session at 4:45 and then also on June 11th, City Council meeting at 6 PM. Seeing and having nothing more on our agenda, we are adjourned.